They failed to provide a proper diet. And the failure to provide a proper diet led to obesity. Recall that Sarah Penhalligan called this raccoon the most obese raccoon she'd ever seen. And the Greer's care limited the raccoon's quality of life. We've also learned indefinitely here that the Greers lacked a permit to keep the raccoon. I asked Mr. Greer if it's their claim here that they had a raccoon, had a permit to keep the raccoon as of 2017, and the answer to that question is no. There is no evidence of any permit issued by WDFW for them to keep this raccoon. There's also not any convincing evidence that they were subpermatees of any wildlife rehabilitation or including Wolf Town. All we have is a statement uncorroborated from Mr. Greer that he was given some sort of verbal indication of a subpermatee status. But there isn't any documentary evidence to back that up, nor has that claim been corroborated by any testimony from any representative of Wolf Town. And in fact, the documentary evidence is to the contrary. Ms. Thompson has testified that there was no record of a subpermatee status for the Greers through Wolf Town. And recall that the Wolf Town permits, which are exhibits that the Greers submitted, specifically Exhibits N, O, and Q, each indicate that there were no subpermatees under the Wolf It's also, we've also learned that the Greers couldn't have met the requirements applicable to a permatee or a subpermatee for wildlife rehabilitation. Again, as Ms. Thompson was just testifying, those are limited to rehabbing wildlife for eventual release into the wild at 180-day intervals, which can be extended if necessary. But again, the animal has to be on track towards wild release in order to be able to be held under a re-validation permit or a subpermit. We also learned that the Greers were in the habit of telling people that they did possess some sort of subpermit through Wolf Town. Recall Katie Greer, I asked her, "Do you remember your mother or father telling people that they were subpermatees?" And she answered, "In general, that was generally just what they said when asked." We also learned that wild animals, and raccoons in particular, should not be taken from the wild and kept as pets. As Ms. Thompson was just discussing, when a wild animal is taken out of the wild, taken out of the environment that they've adopted, adapted to, or taken away from their own kind, and that violates the principle that wild animals should be kept wild and with members of their own species. Taking wild animals out of the wild threatens wild animal populations by reducing the number and diversity of animals in the wild. We learned that wild animals can be dangerous. Even if tamed, they can revert to wild behaviors unpredictably and bite, scratch people or pets, potentially causing serious injury. We learned that wild animals, including raccoons, can carry potentially dangerous zoonotic diseases that can pass to humans and that can pass to other animals. And we learned that people generally lack the resources and expertise, people who aren't certified or permitted as wildlife rehabilitationers, lack the resources and expertise to meet the unique needs of wild animals. They're not able to properly house, feed, and provide the enrichment that a wild animal needs. The Greer's care for this raccoon, while again, they were certainly well-intentioned, but they weren't able to afford necessary vet care, and they didn't have the knowledge to provide a proper diet, and they didn't provide a life for this raccoon that allowed it to enjoy its raccoon-ness. It was always, we learned, it was always at the Greer's house, confined to their house or in the cage, and/or on leash. So these are the reasons why it's important, it's important as a policy matter for the state of Washington that wild animals shouldn't be taken from the wild and kept as pets. So now I want to turn to the petitioner's argument that they have come to possess this raccoon by adverse possession. And that claim must fail, both as a factual matter and as a matter of law. First of all, there cannot be adverse possession against the state as to wildlife because the state's ownership, and I put that in quotes, of wildlife is so unique. The state doesn't own wildlife like it owns other property, like a piece of real property or a vehicle. The state owns, to the extent it owns it, wildlife in its sovereign capacity for the benefit of all the people in the state. So it's a very unique property ownership concept. Second of all, there cannot be adverse possession against the state generally. And I specifically want to address the argument that petitioners may have made based on U.S. Oil and Refining Company v. State Department of Ecology. And that case does not alter that fundamental legal rule. And I want to dive into the concept of adverse possession a bit to explain why that's the case. So adverse possession is based on the statute of limitations for an action to regain the subject of property having run. So without a legal mechanism for the previous owner to regain it, the property held by the new owner is vested in that person, and the previous owner is divested. If the statute of limitations for an action to regain subject property has not run, then there isn't adverse possession because the owner can always initiate a legal action to retain it. As to personal property, an action to regain personal property is a required action which is governed by RCW Chapter 7.64. And the statute of limitations for such action is three years under RCW 416080, subsection 2. But under RCW 416160, the statutes of limitations established in Chapter 4.16 RCW generally do not run against the state, with certain exceptions that are applicable here. Thus, the three-year statute of limitations established in RCW 416080, subsection 2, applicable to an action to regain personal property, does not run against the state. The state may initiate an action to regain a property at any time. And because the statute of limitations for an action to regain property does not run against the state, there can be no adverse possession of the personal property of the state. So petitioners point to U.S. Oil and Refining Company and claim that that case somehow undermines that flag letter of legal rule. But petitioners complete the statute of limitations for an action to regain personal property with the statute of limitations for the state to bring certain enforcement actions against parties that abide by the law. So in U.S. Oil, the court held that RCW 416100, subsection 2, which requires the state to bring a forfeiture or civil penalty action or a violation within two years of a violation, was not abrogated by RCW 416160, which is the statute that says that the statute of limitations generally don't apply against the state. So U.S. Oil and Refining Company doesn't have anything to do with the statute of limitations for an action to regain personal property, and therefore, it doesn't have anything to do with adverse possession. Again, that case does not alter the rule that adverse possession of personal property cannot be against the state. And as to whether WDFW is within the two-year statute of limitations for bringing an action for forfeiture or penalty, even assuming that statute applies here, and it does not because WDFW is not bringing enforcement action against the Greers, it seized the raccoon under its authority under 7715. It didn't initiate a civil action for forfeiture or a fine. But in any event, WDFW acted well within the statute of limitations. The Greer's violation of the law was ongoing and was occurring as of the day Officer Trent Wyder seized the raccoon. Thus, the department's action occurred within the two-year statute of limitations, even if that were a matter of concern. I next want to address the equitable stoppable claim. And the Greers, of course, claim that the department has equitably stopped from enforcing the prohibition on retaining a possessing wild animal. But the Greer's equitable stoppable claim fails. The Greers have the burden to establish each of the elements of equitable stoppable by clear, cogent, and convincing evidence. The Greers have not met that burden here. They cannot establish the existence of any statement or act by authorized WDFW personnel inconsistent with the department's enforcement of the prohibition against retaining or possessing wild animals. Critically, the Greers claim only non-action by the department, alleged non-action by enforcement officers to, you know, allowing them or observing the Greers with the raccoon, but not taking immediate enforcement action. First of all, I'm not aware of any case, and I don't think petitioners have pointed to any case where a non-action in the basis for equitable stoppable as opposed to an affirmative act or statement. But in any event, the Greers have not established the actual, that these statements or that these non-actions that actually occurred as they claimed they did. The Greers basically claim that they encountered fish and wildlife officers, and the officers didn't take enforcement action. But we, the evidence shows that most likely the Greers told those officers that they were operating under a subpermit from the Wolf Town. And so it's not surprising that those officers would not have taken immediate enforcement action. Second of all, the evidence as to those interactions with fish and wildlife officers are not corroborated by any other evidence. All we have is the Greer's statements as to that. And so that's simply not sufficient to meet clear, cogent, and convincing standards. Next, the Greers cannot show that they relied on any statement or act by WDFW personnel. They didn't discuss in any way what they did in reliance on this act or statement by WDFW. There isn't anything that they said they would have done, that they did, they would have done differently had the act not occurred. Finally, in any event, a state employee cannot by their words or actions or inactions make legal what is expressly illegal under state law. And that's especially so when it comes to non-action by law enforcement officers to enforce state law. That would mean that if a law enforcement officer observed criminal wrongdoing, but for whatever reasons, a variety of reasons, maybe they had other enforcement priorities, if they didn't take law enforcement action, that that would somehow make legal the criminal act that they observed. That's simply the case. Next, I'll address briefly the claim that there was a farrier violation, and that that violation means that the Greers are entitled to the remedy of returning the raccoon. First of all, our argument is that there was no farrier violation at all because Officer Stafford did not go to the Greer home with the intent to seize physical evidence or contribute. He testified that his intent was to learn whether the Greers in fact had a permit. And so because that was his intent when he went to the Greer home and went inside, no farrier warnings were required, and there was no farrier violation. But even assuming there was a farrier violation, it's simply not the case under the law that return of the seized property is a proper remedy. And as we discussed in our brief, if illegal drugs or illegal weapons or something like that were seized as a result of a farrier violation, the remedy, the proper remedy would not be the return of that legally possessed property. Here, the Greers cannot legally possess the raccoon, and so they're not entitled to its return whether there was a farrier violation or not. Next, I'll address the claim in the petitioner's pretrial brief that the seizure of the raccoon here somehow is an equal protection violation. And first, so the petitioners claim in their brief that it's an equal protection violation for the Department of Fish and Wildlife to allow citizens to possess raptors for falconry that are taken from the wild, and for game farms to possess certain game birds for food and hunting, but not to allow someone in the position of the Greers who took a wild animal from the wild and made it as a pet. Their claim is that that differential treatment is an equal protection violation. So some important facts that we learned that are relevant to this claim. We heard from Mrs. Thompson about falconry, that taking birds from the wild and falconry is really fundamentally different from what the Greers did here, taking this raccoon out of the wild. So under the falconry program, under very limited circumstances, certain birds may be taken from the wild by persons who possess the falconry permit, and those birds may be used in falconry, that is, hunting with those birds. We heard from Ms. Thompson about the rigorous requirements for becoming a permitted falconer, including passing a rigorous test and apprenticeship. Possession of raptors for falconry is heavily regulated by the Department of Fish and Wildlife, including regulations applicable to their care, feeding, housing, and their use. They are subject to, people who possess falcons are subject to inspection by the department, and there are also reporting requirements when a bird is taken from the wild or released back into the wild. Falconry, raptors are housed to keep them in a semi-wild state, and birds, as Ms. Thompson testified, may be returned to the wild after a certain period of time. Possession of raptors is limited to those using them for hunting purposes, and they may not be kept as pets. And falconry has a long history and provides recreational opportunities to the people in the state. We also know that game bird farming is fundamentally different from what the Greers did here, taking this raccoon out of the wild. The regulations applicable to game bird farms provide that game birds aren't taken from the wild. They are propagated through captive breeding, so they're essentially livestock, and they're really dissimilar to wild animals. So the equal protection clause is of course a command that no state shall deny to any person in its jurisdiction an equal protection clause, which, as the U.S. Supreme Court said in Cleburne versus Cleburne Living Center, is essentially a direction that all persons similarly situated be treated alike. So the Fourteenth Amendment equal protection clause is concerned with legislative classifications of people who are otherwise similarly situated. Quoting Cleburne, again, the general rule is that legislation is presumed to be valid and will be sustained if the classification drawn by the statute is rationally related to a legitimate state interest. So here, first, the Greers and any other person who would take a wild animal from the wild to make it a pet, they are not similarly situated to those possessing falconry permits and possessing falcons, and are not similarly situated to licensed game farm operators. For those reasons, again, falconry is heavily regulated, and game bird farming only involves animals that aren't taken from the wild. But even if they were similarly situated, the classifications that are reflected in the department's regulations are rationally related to a legitimate state interest. Allowing the limited taking and possession of raptors for falconry promotes the lawful and regulated participation in this activity. Given the interest in participation in falconry, WDFW has a legitimate state interest in legalizing and regulating the activity. Furthermore, lawful and regulated falconry promotes conservation of raptors by creating a cadre of persons committed to maintaining healthy raptor populations and have that as a dependent. Licensed game farm may raise certain birds for food and for hunting, but again, these are not birds taken from the wild. Licensed game farms provide game birds for public consumption and for use in hunting activities. Both of those are legitimate state interests and the front's regulation in the way it does, is rationally related to that interest. I'll close by pointing out that returning the raccoon to the Greers in this case would set a dangerous precedent. It would undermine the law and encourage some people to take animals from the wild while might otherwise not. I think Ms. Thompson said something that was really on point. She said, "If the, if people are allowed to keep wildlife like the Greers would be if it were returned to them, it creates a perception that it's okay to keep wildlife." And that's simply not in the state's interest to allow that perception to be out there. So we would ask that the department's seizure of the raccoon in this case be fine.
There you go. Mr. Kirk? I'm writing down one note off the chair last time. I'd like to begin with standard of review, go through factual highlights of the testimony, documentary, and testimonial, then talk a little bit about the status of the raccoon, discuss permitting issues, some of the health concerns that have been raised, the role of a rehabber, and then the variety of legal arguments. And then close with the recommendation. The standard of review in this case is one that would be no different than where the government issuing a parking ticket or speeding ticket, or issuing a criminal charge or fine. The burden is on the government to justify it. The status quo ante was to have May, a raccoon, found in a state of abandonment in an orphaned setting with her eyes so closed, and brought into the May's home, initially not wanting to keep her, but struggling to try to find one of the many, or perhaps I should say few, state permatees to take her in and provide her there that Ms. Thompson spoke to so that she could get her own rights. That simply was unavailable. That did not happen. And it's up to you to determine the credibility in the course of the Greers, but I'm convinced that they are being straightforward in view as to the efforts they took. Now, oh, here I am going into the facts. The state has not come forward with any admissible non-speculative evidence that there was a facility that was anywhere near the Greers that actually had an opening and would have been able to keep her May and to prepare her for release into the wild. Rather, the evidence that you have in front of you is from both of the Greers, and I think maybe Katie Greer, her daughter, also spoke to this, of the dozens of entities in Washington, in Montana, in Oregon, maybe even Idaho, that were contacted over the course of several months, and simply nobody was able to take them. Even the state was called, and the state just sent them back down the same route Jason did work. At some point, Wolf Town was located and identified. And what you have to determine is whether Mr. and Mrs. Greer are committed to. Did they in fact make contact with T. Martino or Nick Gargano Boto? Now, did they make contact with her back in 2010, around, I think December is what we're seeing? And if so, did they have a conversation where Ms. Martino advised that, yes, we can put you under our permit, you need to build an adequate enclosure, which is consistent with what we see here as the general regulations of keeping wildlife, which the Greers did comply with, also to provide that she not be allowed to just run loose, but to be restrained? That did happen. There's no evidence to support the view that she was allowed to run loose and get into people's yards and cause problems of any nature. You have evidence that an enclosure was built that was actually, I think, larger than the enclosure for two raccoons and sea barred, and also was not on a concrete pad, I don't believe, but allowed her to put her paws into the grass to have a chance to get out and swim in a real pond, not to be stuck in some sort of small little basin to wash her hands in or play with the hoes in. And she also had the ability to interact with a variety of species, of human and non-human. So the subpermatee question, at some point, it explains the course taken by the Greers, and it explains why, after a number of years of doing their research, and Mr. Greer making calls to Wolf Town, and a little advice here and there, why eventually they sort of hit a routine, hit a stride, and realized how to do it. Come 2014, they established her as a patient with the Center for Bird and Exotic Animal Medicine, and they took her there. You have the invoices, I think they spent, I don't know, $800, $800. They had a number of visits, they bought a number of supplies, they addressed the flea issues that she had, and that's not uncommon in the Northwest. I don't know if your honor has animals or where, but there are seasonal periods where fleas can go out of control for any one of those cats or dogs, much less raccoons. That's not a reason to seize her, of course, but steps were taken. The testimony that you've heard so far, I'm going to try to take it in order with the actual events. I'll start with A, David Copeland. David Copeland is a 50-year resident in the White Center Norman and Park area, neighbor to the Greers. Highlights of his testimony are that May was completely imprinting in humans, his children, his grandchildren, no injury, no threat was presented. And in the terminology that we see here, and I think the Whack in RCW or either one, talks about taming, habituation, imprinting, there are various levels here of the degree to which an animal can shed its wild nature, if you will. And we had testimony from Ms. Thompson, I had asked her about urban raccoon populations, particularly in the Seattle area with the Greers there, and if she would agree that that subpopulation was really already in a habituated state. And my reaction was that she agreed generally with that premise. So we're talking about animals who, although raccoons are technically wildlife, that is true, they are classified for bears, they are classified as small group of animals, but they came into existence in sort of the milieu in which they interacted with the other animals and the human beings as habituated to begin with. That differentiates them from a grizzly, for instance, or an all eagle, who was not going to be ferreting around in close proximity to people and their animals. So as, in that respect, David Copeland provides that there is a large local raccoon population already, of which he was aware, and that people are putting out food and interacting with it. He's observed the love and attention that the Greers had for May. That's really the thrust of his testimony. Exhibit E is from John Jensen, also an individual who's known the Greers and known May, observed her with dogs, cats, seen her leashed in the neighborhood, not running loose in her yard, causing mayhem or trespass. He talks about how she's highly domesticated, how she would get on her back and almost purr, climb up to play with his fingers and hands, again, no thread, no drawing blood, not a problem. Carly Suzanne Johnson, exhibit F, also was first introduced to May as a stranger in the Greer's RV, and offered food to May, and May took the food from her hand, and then as she was visiting with the Greers, May was sleeping half upside down on her back inside the RV. Again, nothing really to write home about in terms of a problem with this raccoon. Again, endorsing the view that she was, for all intents and purposes, believed to be raised as if she were a human. to be raised as if she were a human from day one. Pamela Dorgensen, exhibit G, knew May at birth as a neighbor, again, no menacing behavior, no attacks, friendly to people, non-aggressive, greeting her sitting, by sitting on her feet, sitting on Ms. Dorgensen's feet. John Kah, exhibit H, introduced his young son to May, no incident, see a picture of him holding May on his chest, no aggression, she's not trying to gouge his eyes out or anything like that. Kimberly Opey, exhibit I, she indicates that Chris Greer fixed her electric roof windows, plumbing that are up to code, and that's in the context in which she met May. She says she gave them a dog run, I think that's perhaps the run that was attached or hitched to the shed that Mr. Greer talked about, and that it provided a safe haven for May with a hammock, toys and a sandbox. Nicholas Plemmell, Seattle Police Department Officer, exhibit J, talks about the burglary call that brought him to their street, how he was invited in, how the Greers were cooperative and weren't trying to hide May, that there's no guilt here, there's no guilty conscience here, I don't know, this seems very evident in the testimony, that they're very just transparent about this. So that, I think, is also indicative of whether they're making things up about a sub-permy. He says that she appeared healthy, took a picture of her and dropped in unannounced a week or so later with his daughter. No incident, no problem. And I'll note, he found no violation of Seattle Code. Seattle Code isn't really apropos here to this, but if he had noticed anything that was a sense of animal neglect or animal cruelty or viciousness, then he would have been within his rights to bring here, take action. Wolf Town permits, and through Q, I presented this to indicate that in the time that Mr. Greer did have contact with Wolf Town, they were able to take four raccoons. Now, if they, if their permit didn't allow for raccoons at all, that would look very bad for us. That would be suggestive that the Greers are not taking them. But they did. They had the ability to bring in four raccoons over the 2010-2013 period. Also, Wolf Town had scientific collection permits for education and display. That, I presume, would apply to the permitted animals. So May could have been one of their sub-permitted education or display animals under the scientific collection permit that was issued to them two years in a row according to the records. Next, testimony of Patricia Thompson and some of the documents I got, including her notes from a call with Sarah Penelagan on February 7th, 2013, which is exhibit T. First off, Ms. Thompson has, I think, a master's, master's degree, has a long experience. I think there was some kidding at the last hearing here, I didn't mean to make a comment or on her age at all, but I would just say that she has a lot of experience working in the field of wildlife and as a biologist, but she did candidly admit she's never personally rehabbed a raccoon from a baby. She's not a behaviors, she's not a trainer, she never ran a rehabilitation facility, she hasn't done a temporal test on May. And also, she didn't want to give an opinion on veterinary medicine, and the class she took in parasitology is probably some type of. That said, with that foundation, we have the statements made. As I said earlier, she agreed that raccoons living among us or at least in close proximity with the Greers are would be already in a habituated state. She claimed that animal welfare is the reason to prohibit possession, but here, let's look at that. As applied, her welfare was met by saving her from suffering and death that afflicts really the average raccoon out in the wild. The average lifespan of a wild raccoon is 1.8 to 3.1 years under the best of conditions, and May is seven and a half in the care of the Greers. That's got to stand for something. Also, we have the fact that her mother was found hit by a car and dead on the road. I don't know if there was a car accident, I don't know if anyone got hurt, but having raccoons roaming in and out of the street or a freeway is a hazard to the public. Getting them off the roads is baiting a nuisance and protecting the public and certainly protecting the raccoon. That was also done by the Greers. We have the fact that she was removed as a nuisance vector. Remember, which fish and wildlife treats her as nuisance wildlife, along with the opossums apparently and some other small mammals? And, and so I don't think the state's interest in nuisance wildlife can really be said to be remotely the same as its interest in a big game, for instance. So how was she removed? Well, she took her, they took her off the streets, not a trespassing animal, not causing property damage, not fighting with other animals, not spreading disease through the use of public latrines. And I'd say, you know, the Greers are not meant to be perfect. You know, there's been no animal cruelty charges, even bandied a ballot against them. They, they did pretty well by her when you consider the life they gave her, the pictures you've seen, the efforts they made to learn what it means to, as Mrs. Greer said, let her be a raccoon, did the best they could, foster parents. The claimed effect on population of the ecosystem, kind of touch upon it, the sort of re-examination of Ms. Thompson. State has no interest in increasing the population of raccoons, that's just silly. They're nuisance. The, the goal of nuisance is to eliminate and to reduce the population. And so they did that. They never bred her, they weren't looking to make a profit by selling her kits online or across state lines, they didn't do that. And Mrs. Thompson agreed that May would be too, it's too late to release her, and that you really can't wild up an animal who has been so habituated, so tame, so imprinting for so long. So unfortunately, no matter what Ms. Penelagan said, or what would wish because of her frustration in keeping May at Sevar, putting May out in the wild would be a disaster.
Totally.
We have the notes with Ms. Penelagan, exhibit T. In those notes, we have evidence that the Director of Fish and Wildlife and the Assistant Director of Fish and Wildlife supported Ms. Thompson speaking to Ms. Penelagan to encourage some type of outcome that would allow May to go home, and wanted to discuss what conditions might be placed that are reasonable. And you know, I'd say, those aren't unreasonable concerns. Quarterly vet checks, sure. Weight checks, yeah. Deworming, easy. And there was a concern, what do you do with them when they go out of town? Well, we already know, the Greers wouldn't leave her alone, they'd take her with, which is a much better life than living in a cage for, for the next conceivably 10 to 15 minutes. Turning to Ms. Penelagan and some of the issues in her testimony, she's not a veterinarian, no publications, no presentations, never raised a raccoon for as long as the Greers did. I'll take the health issues that she raised one by one. Roundworm, I found it. Ms. Thompson did reference a three inches, and I see it here, it's in exhibit three, page three. So what we have here is a note that a three-inch-long parasite was removed from the rectum of May. That's it, one, one worm. And if you want, I can supplement, but I'll tell you that a three-inch roundworm, assuming it's a Bayless asteris, and I don't know that it is, because no one ever actually identified it as such, at least not anyone trained in being able to distinguish one, a toxic Heraicatus from a toxic Heraicati from a toxic Heraeoviana from a Bayless asteris, we don't have anyone who actually differentiated. And the lab results actually just say roundworm. They don't specify the type of roundworm. Three inches, well, can we age a rec, an alleged raccoon roundworm based on that? What I can tell you, and I can cite to an article, is this. Adult, I forgot to put that down, adult male roundworms are between 10 and 11 centimeters, which is four plus inches. Adult female roundworms are twice that long. So a three inch, if it's a male, would still be an adolescent. If it's a female, really, really, really young. And so what that tells me is that this, this roundworm wasn't growing very long in her. Does that really matter, the scheme of things? I think at some level it does, because there's an accusation that somehow the Greers harbored raccoon roundworm in their home. There's zero evidence that she ever had roundworm coming out of her body over the seven and a half years she lived with them. What we know is this, November 26, she's pulled from their house, taken to Paws. The time that this alleged three-inch roundworm was pulled out of her was December 9th, which was two weeks later. Could a roundworm have, could she have picked up something, maybe some eggs, licked it, interacted with another animal there, something on the floor, and then had it build within her so that by the time it's pulled from her, it's strange as long? I think it's possible, maybe even probable, but it's just one, and it's taken care of, and there's no evidence she's had other roundworms. And Ms. Penelagan said, "Revolution works year-round."
Easy.
Easy solution. So it's really a red herring, but just because of the sort of the scare tactics being raised here by the state, what I would say is this, take a look at the exhibits I provided as to the roundworms for dogs and cats. The roundworms for dogs and cats, according to the CDC and King County Department of Public Health, blind 70 people in the United States per year, mostly children. And I'm talking about raccoon roundworm, I'm talking about dog and cat roundworm. It also provides the same varible migraines issue that, that is apparently involved with raccoon roundworm, so they can sort of take up and grow inside of people's eyeballs and other parts of their body, including their brain, but it's not an issue that's just restricted to raccoons, dogs and cats, and there's millions of dogs and cats that people have. And the King County Department of Public Health cites toxic Hera infection, roundworm, both species. It also says that 14% of the US population has been exposed to those roundworms. That's far greater than any evidence that we have about raccoon roundworm based on the state's own submission. Their article that they provided states that, I think, there were only 12 or 13 cases in decades in the United States involving raccoon roundworm. So if we put it in perspective, it's sort of a red herring. Ringworm, no ringworm was found when Sevar did its germinophytic test, it came back negative. There was some positive, or we think it's a false positive test years ago, the Greers stated that they never saw roundworm lesions on themselves, it's pretty obvious, ringworm, or any of their cats, or even May. So again, non-issue. The liver issue, the hepatic lipodosis, I objected saying that Ms. Penelagan couldn't diagnose, but even so, what's undisputed is that she was never put on medications for it, she was never ultrasounded, she was never radiographed for it. Ms. Penelagan said she got supplements but couldn't find that in the chart notes. It obviously wasn't that big a concern. The broken tooth, or broken teeth. According to the records here, there was a, a second tooth that was broken off, like the pulp, and I, I misread this at first, not to the pulp cavity. So it means that the pulp wasn't actually exposed, so if she's eating something, it wouldn't actually like zing in the same way that if you have your tooth broken off in a car accident or a bike accident, and it's just sitting there exposed so that any liquid or food that touches it is going to send you into deep agony. That's not what we had here. And when I asked her, "Did you check to see if her teeth would chatter under anesthesia?" She didn't recall feeling that. So we don't know the extent that she was in any great pain. Obviously, she could eat, I mean, they're saying she was obese, so she had no trouble eating through her, but the dentition was not creating enough pain that would prevent her from eating and causing a problem. What we do know is that according to the medical records, just a couple of months before, at the Center for Bird and Exotic Animal Medicine, there was just one alleged broken tooth, not two, the Greers were never told of two, and they were never told it was an urgent issue because she wasn't favoring and she was still eating. The weight issue, I, I crossed Ms. Penelagan on body condition scoring methodology, she could not identify a scientifically grounded methodology that applies to raccoons. Instead, I think she was using the wings for dogs or cats and horses. Even so, yes, it appears that raccoon was, I mean, that Ray, May was heavy, yes, that's apparent, but it doesn't mean that it rose to such a level as to create a, a health crisis. You would expect to see if she had some, such a severe condition, that there would be other health effects. Her blood work did not appear to present that type of problem at all. And I'll note, she was in Paws' custody for over a week before. I don't know what she was eating under their care, if she was picking up more weight while she was there or not, we don't have that information. I will note that at Paws, the chart notes indicate that she was bright alert and responsive when she appeared at Paws, and when she first got to Sevar, she was bright alert and responsive. It was after a couple of days, though, that she became quiet and depressed, and that was under Sevar's care, not her, my client's care, not her Paws. May's life now is sitting in an eight-by-24 enclosure by a parking lot with another raccoon apparently she doesn't like very much. She has no interaction with cats, she has no real interaction with human beings that's positive. Instead, what we have is Ms. Penelagan trying to pull syringe her four times according to the records, causing May to fling at her face from a hammock, and also attacking Miss Kitty. These are behaviors that were never seen with the Greers at all, and so what's the cause? The, the fact is that even from within the first week and a half, Ms. Penelagan was saying that May hated her. This is not a good place for May, if we're really considering about the welfare of an individual animal, as you had asked, Ms. Thompson, do we consider just the species level, the individual? You need to consider both. We have evidence from Ms. Penelagan that they actually, if they're concerned about vector of disease, she testified that they leave part of it open so rodents can come in and I don't know what, be caught and eaten by the raccoons or defecate there. I don't know how that's a sense of practice, but it's, again, it's not at all what the Greers were doing, and I don't hope it commends for either species involved, and it's not a con-species issue, it's a cross-species issue. May cannot swim in a pond, she can't really swim anywhere at Sevar, she can't climb trees, she can't touch the grass unless she reaches out of her pommel, she barely touches it. It's not a life that she was accustomed to. And in fact, Ms. Penelagan's in her emails, these are exhibits of exhibit T, is so exasperated that she even suggests, "Let's just release her into the water." Paws, if you look at the Paws' records live, there's no evidence of aggression, I think that's important to see as well. Steffler, Officer Steffler, well, he testified that he took a picture of May with Mr. Greer from one foot away, no aggression whatsoever. This is a person who's dressed up in gear and is coming as closer to, closer to May than I am to you, and observed no sign of attacking or aggression whatsoever. He also obviously wasn't that motivated that this was a real problem, he took him on duty to notify his supervisor, Jurors, to then follow up on it. We also know that he confirmed that Mr. Greer told him that he knew of a game warden in Berry or Stevens County, Pebble Falls area, or game management unit 105, who knew of May and was described to Mr. Greer as a, but then Mr. Greer came, was really friendly and was very open about where they had found May, in the city limits of Seattle several years before. But are we going to take Mr., Officer Steffler's word as to the details? Well, he made two errors, make it what you will. He called her Angel in an email to his supervisor, I don't know how you get Angel from the word "May," but he called her Angel, and he got the date of birth from Mr. Greer wrong. So he's not paying that close enough attention to that incident. Officer Weeder, what we know is that he showed up at the front door with his full gear, his duty belt, with all sorts of weapons to do a bunch of damage if he needed to, a bulletproof vest on. You see someone like that showing up at your door, it's going to create an impression. He never sought consent in writing or orally to come into the Greer residence, never gave a fair warning, he had consent forms in his car or truck, but he didn't get them or use them. And it was understood, I believe, that he would take her before questioning her if there was no permit. You had asked him what was his mindset before he ever showed up at the front door, and I believe the evidence supports that he knew in his mind that there was cause to seize her even before he knocked. And that's based on the email he admitted to reading, which is my exhibit, file, it's written, exhibit AA, is an email that he claims to have read before he went out. And in that email, two pieces of information are undisputed. One, that May was found in Seattle, she was not imported from out of state so there wouldn't be a Department of Ag permit needed, he knew that. Number two, he knew that WildCom ran a permit search and found nothing. So in light of that, was there probable cause from his standpoint to believe that there may have been a crime? I think so. He denied it, which made very little sense to me, and didn't seem very candid, but that's what he said. I believe that if you find that, that there was at least probable cause from his standpoint with what he knew before he knocked on the door, and that he was going to seize, unless there was some overwhelming evidence to the contrary, that he needed to get consent. He didn't. He entered, when he entered through the front door and the screen door snapped behind him, that's when he had plain view, wouldn't have had plain view unless he had been invited in, and then he seized from that point. Whether he gave a warning or a criminal charge or not thereafter, really just sort of, sort of, supports the view that, that he believed that there was something criminal going on. The raccoon status here, raccoons are not inherently dangerous animals under state law or the inherently Dangerous Animal Act. That's important, I think, for you to consider as to the assertions that, well, raccoon animals may be unpredictable and cause harm to people. They were not included in the list of inherently dangerous animal act. They were not included in the list of inherently dangerous mammals, including delus and canids. I think that's important. The legislature doesn't agree. She's gained nuisance wildlife. She was evaded by being brought inside. They are ubiquitous, as I noted. They're already habitual. I referenced Sterling North, who wrote a children's book about a raccoon, pet raccoon. This was back in the 60s, and a movie was made of it. Mr. Greer talked about President Calvin Coolidge, who had Rebecca, a raccoon, in the White House. And that was 90 years ago. You asked, "How many states allow raccoons?" I can supplement. Mr. Greer's telling me he's researched it, and takes 38 states. I don't, I know that there are states. And if that's important to you, I can supplement. But it is not the case that raccoons are barred or banned from every corner of the United States. As for the claim that she's contraband, I won't repeat it, but I think in my briefing, it's clear that she's not the same as a cake of cocaine, or a sawed-off shotgun, or child pornography, or explosives, or something that's really, no one has any right to possess. And there are several state exceptions that are unlike other wildlife. For instance, raccoons can be killed if they're causing any property damage. Whether you have a hunting permit, trapping permit, any permit at all, daily bag or possession limit to them, they're nuisance, as I said. The WACs, the RCWs, don't even use the word "contraband." And I'll just leave the rest of it to whatever. The other glosses that I would put on this question of contraband law, necessity, the fact that they tried, and there's nothing else to do, and what would you expect of humane individuals? You'd expect them to try to save a baby raccoon, not just euthanize her or put her back out with dogs to eat her up. Entrapment, you know? If the state can't manage its wild population or its nuisance population, what did they expect the public to do? But open their hearts and open their homes. And then have this happen to them? And then abandonment. I believe that by not licensing, you know, Ms. Thompson said, "It'd be great if there was one on every street corner." But we have so many. I agree, it would be great. But we don't have that. And in fact, what we see, in fact, are rehab facilities closing down because of Department of Fish and Wildlife action. So whatever, hopefully, will be changed as a new policy direction under the new director. At the time, they had May, they were unable to place her anywhere. So I'd say that she was abandoned, sort of de facto, by the government. And they took on that role. The Greers also had a hunting permit. And so the hunting permit, this is, and take from it what you will, but I would say this. Under 77-08-010 RCW, again, 77-08-010 subsection 33, it defines "to hunt" as "an effort to kill, injure, harass, harvest, or capture a wild animal or wild bird." The word "to take," or the verb "to take" is defined under the same section as "to kill, injure, harvest, or capture a wild animal." And the issue here is that in taking May from the wild into their home, they did capture her. You can call that hunting. You can call that taking, and they had a permit. But the permit was sort of a hunting permit, a recreational hunting permit. WAC 220-450-030 says, "It is unlawful to take live wildlife without a permit." It also says, "It is unlawful to possess or hold in captivity live wild animals unless lawfully acquired." The thrust of my argument is this. They had a hunting permit, they lawfully acquired her by capturing her. Therefore, we're done. So that's one way to view it. We don't even need to get to the rehab permit issue. The Greers did provide proof of lawful acquisition and possession for inspection under 220-450-030. So four, they identified to anyone who helped her, added with them her species, her age and sex, saying they found her seven-and-a-half years ago, saying she was a female, calling her May. The origin is that they found her in a park in Seattle. The rest of the conditions under that WAC are really inapplicable. So again, they weren't hiding her. They were right out of the open and complying with Officer's question. Now, the alternative argument here is that they had a sub-permit from Wolf Town. And, you know, the evidence I submitted proves that Wolf Town had the bona fides. They were permitted, they were licensed. There was even correspondence between Ms. Thompson and Ms. Martino in 2014, when Ms. Martino said, "I think I'm going to stop doing this for a while. Let me go inactive, but I want to still keep the great horned owl that I have for life." And I think she wanted to keep another bird for life. And that wasn't an issue. Again, an example of private possession. And Wolf Town, if it's sub-permitting in violation of the law, that's not my client's issue. That's between the state and the permittee. But when we take a look at the WAC that we had discussed in cross-examination, the WACs that required that a sub-permitee be identified with a variety of other pieces of information did not exist at the time May was found, nor exist at the time that she became sub-permitting with Wolf Town. That WAC did not go into effect until September of 2013. I looked at the WACs in 2012, 2011, 2010, 2009, and I found nothing similar. If I missed it, I didn't see it. So although apparently the permit in 2010 does have a line for sub-permitting, that's not the law. The law never required that sub-permittees be identified in writing to the state in 2010, 2011, 2012, or early 2013. Nor, incidentally, did the off-site keeping of wildlife provision apply before 2013. So we had some discussion about whether raccoons are able to be kept off-site under a rehaber's permit, whether they're common small mammals or common medium mammals. That whole WAC did not exist before 2013, just another point. Remember all this? Weight, the weight of May. If you look at the exhibit that I presented, which I believe was Z, as in Zulu, Living with Wildlife Raccoons, it indicates that the weight of an adult raccoon is 14 to 40 pounds, and some males get to 60. May was 28 pounds when she arrived at SEVAR, according to the SEVAR's records. I don't remember what she's at now, maybe 22 or thereabout. I don't know what her weight was at Paws, I didn't see a weight measurement there. And I realize that there's only limited value in this exhibit, but it does suggest that she was pretty much plumb right in the middle of that range that's identified by the state itself. Okay. Just to be clear, the off-site WAC that I'm referencing is 220-450-100 subsection 3, Alpha, Beta, and Charlie 2, Charlie, Small Room 2. To refute the argument that Ms. Thompson made that raccoons are not common small mammals, I asked her whether even the phrase "median mammals," "small mammals" is found in the WAC RCW. She said, "No, I looked at it as an error." But if you look at WAC 220-416-010, it defines a raccoon as "small game." This is one of the exhibits I've submitted already. The Big Game statute lists all those species, doesn't include raccoons either. Did you get a small game hunting license that allows hunting of all classified and unclassified wildlife except Big Game? Guess who's included? Raccoons, small games, all games. So, but we only see them as small game. Now, to be fair, I looked closely at the Minimum Standards for Wildlife Rehabilitation for the Edition, which I understand is sort of the latest applied. Now, this has not been fully incorporated by reference as law, but is, I think, a resource that is referenced somewhere in parts of the WAC. If you look here, there's no reference to medium mammals. The word, phrase "median mammals" does not exist in the entire Minimum Standards manual. However, the word "midsize mammal" is included, but more of sort of as an aside. And I believe the page is May 170. And I'll read from it. Under section 5.1.1, it does say, uh, the, uh... Yes. "Plastic pet carriers and stainless steel or fiberglass veterinary cages are suitable for housing most mid-sized adult mammals." I don't know if that's the same meaning as "medium," but, you know, midsize. And who's included? Tree squirrels. Tree squirrels weigh a pound. I don't know how a squirrel can be considered a medium mammal, but tree squirrels, opossums, they weigh what? A couple pounds to maybe 10 pounds? And then woodchucks, raccoon, fox, et cetera. I wouldn't say that that's the law that governs what a common small mammal is, certainly not based on legislative history. But that's the best I could find in this entire Minimum Standards. And the fact that you include little tree squirrels suggests that midsize doesn't mean medium, and that small mammals would include raccoons. The enclosure, if you look at May 174, talks about the Minimum Standards for Raccoon Enclosures. And it says that ideally, you're going to have hammocks. The Greers had a hammock for her. That you have items that she can climb on. They had purchasing catapults, something up on the windowsill for her. A waiting pool, or container applicable to the animal size for bathing and food handling. They let her use the bathtub, and they also had some type of tub. And they had a whole huge pond for her. Outdoor enclosures allow 30 square feet per animal where raccoons are group-housed. An enclosure which is 12 by 18 or 216 square feet can house seven. They had, when I think, 350 square feet, and they had a whole backyard that was massive. So they exceeded the Minimum Standards, is my point. Turning now to, there's an argument to be made as to seizure without deaccess. This is under WAC 220-450-090, subsection 3. And I'll read this here. So 220-450-090, subsection 3. What this one says is that "The department may revoke, modify, or suspend a wildlife rehabilitation permit if the primary permittee or a sub-permittee violates any conditions of the permit." And then it says, "If the department revoke, suspend, or modifies the permit, then the department or the US Fish and Wildlife may seize and find a new rehabilitator for the primary permittee's wild." Here's my argument. Wolf Town was a permittee. There's no contrary admissible evidence from any representative of Fish and Wildlife that such a conversation between Ms. Martino with Wolf Town and the Greers never occurred. They understood that they were a sub-permitting under that permit. If the state believes that they had violated the permit conditions, and if they believed that in 2017 when they knocked at the Greers' door, then what they should have done was taken either, either offered a corrective action plan, which is discussed under subsection 3, to give them, I think, 10 days to put together a corrective action plan. Who knows? Maybe it would mean that the state would say, "Well, Wolf Town's kind of inactive. We need to find somebody else who's got 10 days to do it." And they'd rather opt for that. But if a corrective action plan were accepted, they'd have 30 days to comply. Again, that was not given. If the corrective action plan is not provided, and there is no compliance within 30 days, then and only then can the state go ahead and revoke, suspend, or modify that permit. And they have to do that before they seize. Did the state do that? No, they just seized. They didn't issue any type of appealable determination. I'm looking at subsection 5 here, which says, "Any primary permittee, rehab permittees revoked, modified, suspended, may request an administrative hearing to appeal the department's action." The Greers were never given that ability. And therefore, the seizure was premature if at all allowed. Eagle protection. I would say this. All of the abilities for individuals to take in eagles and other types of raptors, to take in game birds, even take in fox, mink, marten, cofer, those are consumptive stakeholders, meaning that they're taking them in to be killed, to be used, to be harvested, to be profited from. They're not non-consumptive stakeholders like the Greers, like rehab facilities, that they want to make them educational, foster them. I think it's a bit problematic to say that the state wants to protect wildlife and animal welfare, when what they're doing is really just trying to make sure there are enough animals out there to be hunted and killed and trapped and taken dead. And self-permits to that effect. Even with rehab facilities, they want to rehabilitate them so that they can then be sent out into the wild and then hunted. Or to get hit by a car or something else. There is no true long-term consideration for their well-being in that respect. So when we're talking about, what's the similar consideration to capacity here? Or like that, there are people who are some of these people?
Well, folks, I've got to get going. I've got a dog waiting for me at home. Been here all day, but this is a very important hearing. I want to finish by saying that there are a number of different ways that this could be adjudicated. I do believe that the hearing officer is giving us a fair shake. I will say this. When you lose an animal due to somebody else's negligence, or unlawfulness, or any other bullshit that's not a natural cause, when you lose an animal like that, it affects you. And I know what they're going through. Their animal's still alive, but they can't get to them. You know, our Libby is dead because of milk reasons. So I came down here on my own volition. Everybody's paying me. I'm here because I care. And I want to meet this animal. I want to meet May as soon as she is returned home to her lawful home. Also, legally, I like the hunting license argument that Adam postulated. It's simple. He has a right to capture. That's what he did. There are other arguments, too. This is a very long video. I've got to get running. Love you.